Good evening, everyone. Call to order the special meeting of the Board of Education for May 5th, 2021. Will everyone please rise for the pledge of the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any questions on the budget hearing? We have none this evening, right, Ms. Tuch?
Correct.
No questions?
This next.
No, we have, we have nothing, okay. Um, recognition of the PTA reflection winners. We are going to call up Mrs. Shannon Chambers, I believe.
Good evening. For over 50 years, National PTA's reflection program has helped students explore their own thoughts, feelings, and ideas. Develop artistic literacy, increase confidence, and find a love for learning that will help them become more successful in school and in life. Each year, our Monroe Woodbury PTAs invite students in kindergarten through grade 12 to create original works of art in response to a student-selected theme. The theme for 2020-2021 was "I Matter Because." Students submitted their completed works of art in one or all of the available art categories: dance choreography, film production, literature, music composition, photography, and visual arts. Student winners from the local level have the opportunity to move up through their district, region, council, and state PTA programs to the national level. We'd like to honor the PTA reflection entries for each school that moved on to regional judging in each of the six categories. From Smith-Clove, Hazel Ferrara in dance, and she moved on to New York State PTA judging. Danica Levinson in visual arts. And Andy Parris in visual arts. Sapphire Elementary, Ned Sawyer Fontana, who submitted entries for photography and film, and his film moved up through region and all the way to New York State PTA. At Central Valley Elementary, we had Emilio Perez, whose literature entry moved up through region and all the way to New York State PTA. Photography. Lily Perez in visual arts. And Avery Chiracella in visual arts. If the kids, if I call your name and you're here, if you'll go up, I'm sorry, through the ramp and up across the stage, you'll get a... Hannah, I think they want to take your picture, I'm sorry.
Eric? Eric.
And at North Main Elementary, we had Isabella Pavignano, whose literature entry went through region and to New York State. Also at North Main, Brittany Everly, music. High Tree Elementary, we had Noriah Collins with dance. Car Curry Gill, who submitted entries in dance, literature, and photography. Logan Kaiser in film. We had Anushka Chandial, who submitted entries in literature, music, photography, visual arts, and film, and his film entry went from region all the way up to New York State PTA. Harper Burns for literature and visual arts, and Harper's literature entry went to New York State. Ellen Christie for literature. Samir Malik for literature and visual arts. Emily Abrignani, whose visual arts entry went from region to New York State. At Monroe Woodbury Middle School, we had Yunbi Gian in visual arts. Gregory Crissar in visual arts, and Gregory's entry went all the way from regional to New York State. And Abeline Gaines in photography. Abeline's entry went from region to New York State and on to National PTA. At the high school, we had Evra Chandial, who had entries in visual arts, literature, and photography. The photography entry went on to New York State. Harrison Aaron in photography. And Samantha Larkin in film production, who went on from region to New York State as well. The PTA wants to thank everyone who entered, and we hope to see many more entries next year in reflections. The 2021-2022 theme is "I Will Change the World." Aye. Oh, if there's any from middle school or high school, can you?
Just tell them, if, if, if there's anyone else that just arrived that is getting an award, they can come up as well.
We have one more child.
Oh, is there another one?
There was a, yeah, oh, she did.
Oh, I think, yeah, okay.
Perfect, thank you. We're gonna take a two-minute break?
I'm sorry?
We're taking a break?
So they can, yeah.
Okay. Four-minute break.
You want me to do that now?
Yeah. So the kids can go?
Okay.
Thank you very much to the PTA, and congratulations to all of the winners. And for those students that weren't able to be here tonight, congratulations. Um, please reach out to us or to Mrs. Chambers, and we can make certain to get you your pin. But I know the reflections program is a great program that we have in the district, so congratulations, and thanks to the PTA and all the schools that participate. We're going to take a short break so that the students that were here, that if you should want to leave, you can. So we're just gonna take like a quick four-minute break.
Not that it's the last thing, but, but the third item was robust instruction. I had the opportunity this week to walk into classrooms where 80% of the classrooms were in-person, and maybe 20% were at-home, remote. And the instruction was seamless. It was great to see our students and teachers all connecting. And that doesn't happen overnight. That really happens because of the work that our staff and our administrators do and engage in. And so it's very, very exciting. And I do see some young people who are going to be joining our staff, and you are going to be joining an amazing team. They're unbelievable. And the last thing is, just to talk about the fact that I had an opportunity today to talk to senior class advisors. And I think I want to, you know, encapsulate something that they said. They said, "It feels carefree regarding in-person five days." They felt like this was an amazing time, to be able to go out and play sports, and be involved in athletics, and academics, and music, and art, all the things that this district has been committed to, to be able to continue to do that. And we continue to do that because that's our priority, which is our students. And we offer that to our students. And I am so proud and so happy that our students are glad to be back. One student said, "It, it, it couldn't have been a better week, just to be able to come back to school and be with their classmates and see their friends." Because that's important to them, and we acknowledge that. So that's a big deal, and I'm, again, this is, this is the work that this team, this district has done. This board has been committed to the one priority that we've had all year long, which is bringing our kids back to five days every day. And I'm really happy to say that we were able to accomplish that. So I think we should give, we should, I'm gonna give you guys a round of applause. Now onto another topic. So we have decided that we are going to be offering our prom on, on, um, on our property. And I just want to speak a little bit about that because we have 600 students. And whenever we do anything in Monroe Woodbury, we do it big, right? So I think that with everybody's help, the all-night graduation party committee, the administrators, the students, the teachers, with everybody's help, we will be able to coordinate and, and offer a prom to 600 students. That's a big deal, because 600 students on our field is massive. And so when we sent out the letters today, I will tell you that the students felt like they were giddy. That's the only word that I can use. They were giddy, they were excited. They felt like this, the most important thing for them right now is to be with their classmates, to be able to take pictures, to be able to dance, to be able to eat, and feel a sense of normacy. And so it's really exciting that we'll be able to embark on this, and, and I really look forward to that. The other topic I, I do want to broach is a topic of graduation, which has been a topic that I think in the community, people are wondering, "Well, what is Monroe Woodbury gonna do with 600 students?" So it's not just 600 students, it's their parents. So we typically hold a graduation, it's about 2,000 people. And so we have not put out the exact date or exactly what we're doing. And one of the reasons that we haven't done that is because if you watch the news, the rules keep changing, right? And so we're trying to give as many options. One of the options that we've talked about is having the graduation all together in a stadium, because a stadium has more capacity. So one of the stadiums that we've looked at is Boulder Stadium, which is in Rockland County. If we go that route at this moment in time, we would be required to have everyone show a COVID test or a COVID vaccine. So those are the things that we have to think about. That doesn't change. Just because we move the venue to another county, we still have to follow the same rules. And by the way, the county itself has to follow that rule, so they, they would have to do that. And so we're thinking about what are our options. And we also have to remember that we have students who have been remote. We have about 200 students in the high school who are seniors who have been remote. So we have to come up with multiple options. All I do ask is that the community be patient with us. We always make the right decisions. Sometimes a decision takes a long time to make, but I, I do believe that we make the right decision in the best interest of our students. But we have to take into account all of the constituents and all the students that we serve. And we serve students that are remote, we serve students that are in-person, and we have to make sure that we, we cover all of our bases. And so that's just part of what we're doing. Does anybody have any questions?
I just, I just have a comment in regards to the, to the guidance component, because I know a lot of us, I mean, and several of us that are sitting on the board have seniors this year, so we get the frustration. I think a lot of what the community has shared with us has, we've been obviously sharing behind the scenes as well. And I think the real frustration here is the changing guidance. And I, I just, I ask the community and the parents to be understanding of that, because as I say up here countless times, behind the scenes, I know that there is work being done by a lot of individuals, by the high school administration, by the superintendent, by the cabinet, by volunteer people, the senior advisors, the senior students. There is a lot going into it. Unfortunately, the, the end zone keeps moving on us. So now it's getting to the point where it's moving in a positive. I know the other day, the new guidance came out that I think instead of it being 200, it's up now to 500. So there are some changes that are still happening, but to that point, it, we're hoping that it will change even more by the time graduation comes.
Right, and actually, that's what the students asked us. They, some of the questions that our students asked were, "If I have a COVID vaccine, do I have to wear a mask outside?" So there's a lot of pieces to this. And we're, we're continually looking into this and making sure that we, as I said before, our priority is to make sure that our kids are safe and that our staff is safe. So that has not moved. But the other piece that I do want to make note is that we are a large school district, 600 students. Those of you, you know, it, it's, it's not as simple as if I looked at the school district next door, which is Cornwall, they're a much smaller school district. So there are things that they can do that I unfortunately cannot do. And it makes it more difficult. Does it make it impossible? No. I'm gonna say it again, we're Monroe Woodbury, we can do anything. And I think the fact that we are going to host a prom for 600 students is a testament to the people that work in this district. Not me, the people that work in this district, because it took, it's going to take a lot of people to be able to throw this, to be able to do this and do it safely. But again, meeting with the students today and seeing their joy was really an inspiration to me. We use that word, "I was inspired by them," so.
And, and I think part, the, the changing guidelines, we want to take advantage of those opportunities. Like, you, you had mentioned that the guidelines changed positively. If we were to try to lock something in and the guidelines change, we want to be able to take advantage of what those opportunities present us, because in the end, it could mean the difference between, you know, a smaller group and a larger group, or, you know, there are a lot more options. And I think that's the reason why we're not committal, because as things evolve, we want to evolve with those guidelines as they come out.
We do. And I just hope that the governor comes out with new guidelines. I mean, today I watched him, I don't know if anybody watched the governor, but he talked about baseball for a half an hour. Not that I don't like baseball, Ms. Hock, but I really wanted him to focus on students. So we're gonna wait a little longer, and, and then, you know, we'll come back and we'll share that information with, with the community. We are as transparent as we know. I'm gonna say that again, we are as transparent as what we know. And things change, and we, someone says something, the governor makes a statement, just, I'm gonna reiterate this. If the governor makes a statement, I can't act on it until he puts it in writing, and that's the other piece. He can say whatever he wants, but unless it's put in writing, I have to follow whatever it is that's in writing.
And can you just clarify that the most recent communication from the Department of Health is not inclusive of his most recent statement?
No, it's, I think it's dated April 20...
27th.
27th.
And that's one of the, and I think that the reopening is an example of how the details are critical with us having to make sure that everything is in order, that the difference between the elementary star and the secondary star, and, and having to delay the middle school and the high school for the additional time was because of us making sure that we have all of those details completely in place. And, you know, it, it might be said in a presentation, but it's the corresponding guidance, I think that's the most critical piece for us to make sure that we're following.
And specifically, I, I want to note that the guidance is very literally specific to end-of-academic-year celebrations. It's not...
Correct.
What he talked about on Monday about venues opening up and their capacity.
Correct.
It's very specific in guidance to end-of-year academic year celebrations. This is the most recent...
It is, and it's the most recent document that I can go by, correct. That's, that is correct.
And although the limits may be raised, it, it still comes with its own set of criteria...
Correct.
Which we need to follow.
Correct. You know, and, and, you know, just to give an example to those people who are watching, one of the things, when we thought we were reopening, we thought we had covered all of our bases. We bought plexiglass, we made sure that we had enough for every student, we, we did everything. And then Friday night, I've said this before, it comes out and says, "No, you can't use plexiglass, we don't recommend plexiglass, and you have to stay six feet if you're, you know, in this particular scenario." So it took us two weeks to work through all those kinks. But I will tell you again that I'm, I'm, I'm really proud of the community, of the district, of everybody who works, this Board of Education, who's been very supportive of me, you know, and, and, and giving me the support to be able to do this. Because I'm gonna say this, there's not a lot of school districts with 600, you know, with 2,000 seniors, I'm sorry, 2,000 high school students who have been able to do five days. We're the only school district that has been able to do that. And we've done that because that's our priority, and it really, it, it's really important for us.
Thank you, I mean, I, I think that the bottom line at this point is that the seniors will have a prom, and that, you know, it'll, it'll happen here, and hopefully, as the guidance continues to change, it will, you know, the, this plan will continue to evolve over the next few weeks.
Correct.
When, when you say prom, you're, you refer to like a traditional type of prom that, you know, like movie-type prom that the kids are used to? Or are we talking about something that's different than that?
So right now, what we plan is having a prom, and it can, you can come dressed up. I think that's one of the kids, that's one of the things the student said, was we want to make sure the students can come dressed. There's going to be music, there's going to be food, there's going to be dance. There's gonna be all the pieces to a traditional prom that we normally have, with the exception of that it's not gonna be at a venue. Because remember that the original, the original plan was to have 200, to allow 262 students at...
Eisenhower Hall.
Eisenhower Hall in three different rooms. And so we came up with a different plan that I think allows all 600 students the opportunity to participate. So when you say "traditional," as traditional as possible, given everything that we have to do.
But still, safety measures will be obviously held during this prom.
100%.
It's not gonna be a mass gathering of 600 students without any of these criteria.
Right, right, so...
I just wanted to ask one question. You mentioned before that the guidelines are saying, right now, for graduation, it sounded like you were saying for Boulder Stadium, but I think you, it was for...
For any, for anything, yes.
Everyone would have to show a...
Yes.
...sport that they were vaccinated, right?
Correct.
So that's whether we have it on our property or anywhere.
Or somewhere else, correct.
Do those same rules apply to the prom?
Yes, they do, they do. But this is, this, when we're doing the graduation, the students don't count. Only the people that come. So it's different, right? Because this is a district function event, it's like an extension of school. So when students come to school, they don't have to take a COVID test, they don't have to show any of that, they have to wear a mask.
And, and the...
But when we have an event where we have, like, graduation, now we're inviting outsiders, and the minute that we do that, we have to then follow those rules.
And, and the grouping, I think, is a critical piece of that. The graduates wouldn't count if the graduates are not intertwined with the spectators. It, it's all dependent upon the number of people, so that, you know, the same thing with the prom. It might be 600 total students, but if the students are co-horted in such a way where they're not, you know, all 600 kids are not intermingled with one another, and they're able to be in the cohorts as it's outlined in the guidance, then that wouldn't necess, that wouldn't have to apply, because the kids are not overlapping as an entire group of 600. The difference in graduation would be, if, you know, if the graduates are their own group, and depending upon the, the size of the kids that ultimately participate in that, you might also be able to have groups of parents rather than having an entire group. So it, it's all in how the groups are intermeshed with one another.
And that's why we, we've looked at also having graduation in groups, right? So we have 150 students, and then two tickets per parent. You know, that would, that would alleviate and allow us to do this without doing the COVID screening, the, the requirements... the requirements that you have to have a COVID vaccine or you've had to have a COVID test. So, the way that it works, it's...
Can you say that again?
So, if we had a graduation that was 150 students, so you put the students on our property, so they're sitting, the students don't ever count into the number of people that are there. If we decided to do 150 students and allowed each student to bring two guests, then you're talking about three, another 300 people. We could move them and have 150 here and 150 here. I never get to 200, I'm never commingling more than 200 people together. I know this sounds like, but that's just how it works. And so, we've spent a lot of time looking at what are the options that we can have. And that's one of the options that we talked about. If we did groups of 150 students and their parents, we could separate it, the 150 students don't count, the 300 are, you know, people, they're outside, so we don't have to do any testing.
And the reason why the guidance is critical, because if those numbers are going to change and they're going to increase the number of people that they're going to allow potentially without vaccinations or COVID screenings or whatever, it may change the number of, if we were to do ceremonies of 150 students, you might be able to combine ceremonies and have, you know, more kids, less sessions, more kids, and still be under the umbrella of not having to, not having to have people test or not having to have people present a vaccine.
And I think that's...
Does that mean that for the prom, they're going to be co-horted in groups of 150, 150?
Whatever the number is, whatever the number guidance is.
But they can't mingle outside of that group?
But the kids would potentially be, and again, depending upon the guidance, the number may be larger.
Right.
But the kids, we would also give them the opportunity to be able to sign up with their group. It's not like they would be randomly assigned. It would be, you know, sign up with your...
I just want to, for my own understanding how it's, how it's worked. But if we, if the only way we'd be able to forego the cohort version of it would be if we opted for either a negative COVID test or proof of vaccination from each of the students that go to the prom. Same thing for if we were to hold graduation at a large venue. We would either need to cohort them in groups of 150 or smaller or provide negative COVID tests. And how far in advance does this test need to be performed?
I think it's a day, two days.
The guidance, I think, said 72 hours.
Minimum or maximum?
Three days.
Three days.
Three days. Three days maximum before the event or minimum?
Maximum three days.
Three or less.
Three or less. So, you would have to find, so you would have to have not only all of the students, but you would have, if all of their guests would have to be either vaccinated or get the test within that three-day window prior to the event.
Right. I mean, there are a lot of locations that do this testing now, it's really not an issue, should not be an issue if somebody wants to get it done.
And it's not the quick, rapid, five-minute test? This is the full-blown, send it out to the lab kind of thing?
I'm not 100% sure. I mean, it's a traditional PCR, but there are two types of PCR. You have a rapid PCR and you have a more extended PCR. So, I'm not quite sure what the...
Yeah, we have to follow up on that. So, there, I think what we're talking about here is that there's a lot of moving parts and there's a lot of requirements. And then, we have to make sure, you know, one of the concerns that has been shared with me is that if we go through the venue, through the part where we're going to have people take, they have to come in and show a COVID, either way, a test or a vaccine, what happens to the people? Like, how long is that going to take? And what about some of the elderly people that are going to be sitting and waiting for this process? So, it, there's, again, there's a lot of moving parts.
I think there may be one more potential issue. And the issue is that when you get the three-day test, the delivery of results is not always consistent.
Correct.
We come across it with surgeries and with seeing patients. If you're doing a rapid PCR test, the results will be in 10 to 15 minutes. But a lot of facilities like to do their own PCRs because then they have a control of when they're going to get it and they're going to get it in time for a particular procedure. So, that may be another issue that may come up.
Additionally, I mean, if you're looking through this guidance, it's very specific that regardless of the location or scale, all contact information for tracing has to be completed, health screening questionnaires have to be completed. So, that does not change, no matter what.
No matter how many.
Negative test, positive test, no test, vaccine, you still have to, whoever's hosting this event, prom or graduation, has to do contact tracing.
Correct.
How does, how does the governor expect Yankee Stadium to do contact tracing?
Because there, if I'm not mistaken, one of the things he spoke about today is that in order to go in, you have to show your COVID vaccine or your test on your phone.
Right.
So, as soon as you scan your app on your phone, he's tracking to see who's where. We're not doing that for prom and school. But I'm just saying, I think that's how they're doing it for baseball games, et cetera.
They're going to have separate, I mean, at least what he said today, they're going to have the vaccinated section and then they're going to have the unvaccinated section.
Right. So, you go to a certain area.
To me, that sounds like it's a BS kind of thing for the stadiums.
We might not disagree with you, Dan.
No, I'm not going to delve into the politics of it, I'm just...
I just want people to realize that when we talk about these, these rules for guidance, that they're coming from the governor's office and whether people follow them or not is not necessarily, you know, the law is one thing, following it is always something.
Right. And obviously, the key component to this is, you know, the governor made his presentation today and he had his bullet points in his PowerPoint presentation, but it's the details, it's the actual guidance that goes along with that and all, the entire checklist of items that have to be in place, that's the...
He doesn't mention those when he gives his updates.
Right.
Very optimistically about all these changes, but it doesn't negate everything else that's in place.
Right. And I think similarly, I mean, again, to go back to the example of the reopening of school, I think that initially, when the discussion shifted to, you know, possibly the move from six feet to three feet worth of social distancing and things like that, I think people were very optimistic about the possibility of reopening schools. But then, once we got into the details of what the expectations were and because we were in an area of high transmission and everything else, it ended up being more challenging for us. So, you know, we were very optimistic also, but in the end, we are bound to the guidelines and the expectations that are...
Regardless of where it's held.
Right.
Yes. And I think that's the important piece too, for the community to really kind of understand. And I think that we've done a really good job at talking about that at all of our meetings that we've had. We are following the guidance. And so, we are crossing every T, we are dotting every I. It does not matter if we have the prom at another venue or the graduation at another venue, the guidance is the guidance. And we are a school district that we must adhere to what the guidance says and we must follow the rules, whether we agree with them, whether we think they're crazy, it does not make the difference.
Sure.
This is what we have to do.
And this is also not just isolated to the prom or graduation. This is, you know, the Smith Clover Sapphire Field Day or, you know, it's, we have to, I mean, we had a meeting with the principals earlier in the week where it's like, "All right, we may have to do Field Day by grade levels on individual days because you can't, you can't," you know, or grade levels may have to be co-horted out on the field.
A-fest.
Right. Because, you know, you can't just have the traditional, everybody goes outside at that particular moment in time. So, this guidance applies to...
Everything.
All levels.
And kudos to the, to the schools, you know, with the things that they've done. We attended last night the middle school NHS induction ceremony and it was wonderful, but it was outside. And you have to do, you know, you have to do what you have to do.
And that was progress. I might just add on a personal note, and Dr. Hassel and I were just talking about this, my daughter who was inducted in the fall, they had to have a virtual ceremony. Last night was progress because the guidance has changed. They were able to have, albeit it was an outdoor drive-up ceremony, but that was progress from the fall ceremony. So, that's, it steps in the right direction, it's just slow, but that's unfortunately what we have to do.
Yeah. And I think it's great that we're kicking it around and talking about some of these things because I think a lot of the community doesn't realize how tedious a lot of these guidelines are and how we're really trying to get around them or adhere to them in order to get these events through. And it's just really difficult.
You meant to say not get around them, but...
I slipped.
But you didn't mean to say that, what you meant to say was to really be able to follow the rules.
Be in compliance.
But be in compliance.
And still do great things for kids.
Correct.
We'll edit that out.[1564.65][1564.65](LAUGHING).
I think, I think the only piece to Dan's question before, and we sat on that call today with the students, and they do, they want to get dressed up, they want to have a traditional prom, and they will have that. I think the only factor that might be an issue are the high-heel shoes, right Lori? Like, that might be the only downside. But I said to my daughter and her friends, I go, "You girls wear the shoes for 10 minutes in the photos and then take them off anyway to go dance." So, I said, "You can wear your high heels in the parking lot to take your pictures and then take them off when you get on the turf."
They have to wear turf shoes.
Sneakers, there's some awesome sneakers.
And technically, they're going to cover the turf with a dance floor, correct?
They are going to have a dance floor.
But still, getting to that dance floor, I don't think they'll be able to wear heels. But you can still wear a gown and, well, you know, maybe don't wear cleats either, but there's ways to improvise. It'll still be as great as it can be. I know the kids that were on the call today seemed really excited by it, so hopefully that translates to the rest of the senior class.
I want to quote, the president of Student Council said, "This is fantastic." Right? That was his quote. And, you know, I'm really, really happy that the kids were happy because ultimately, that's why we do what we do. So, thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much for the update. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Matt for Personnel?
So, before I request approval for the items under Personnel, I just want to point out, Elsie had mentioned some new teachers and some new faces in the audience, and there are a number here. We have some phys ed teachers, a social studies, special ed teacher. And what they do is they represent the future of this district. So, no pressure, but we expect great things from you. If you're here, if you could just raise your hand and give a wave, that would be fantastic.
Can you introduce them while they do that?
I could introduce them, sure.
I'm going to really put you on the spot and make Mr. Kravitz say your name and stand up, just so that we can actually see who you are.
Sure. Do you want me to stand up too? I can stand up too. And let's see, we've got Carrie McHugh, who's going to be phys ed at the high school.[1688.15][1688.15](APPLAUSE). Dylan Ferrier, who's also going to be phys ed.[1694.33][1694.33](APPLAUSE). We have Vinnie Vespa, who's going to be split between high school and Pine Tree.[1702.33][1702.33](APPLAUSE). Anna Anson, who's going to be social studies special ed here at high school.[1710.15][1710.15](APPLAUSE). So, they're kind of a mix. Some, we have some former students who have been here for a long time and they get to come home. And speaking with each of them, I have to tell you, because they get to, they get to my office and interviews are always awesome, but they are ready to kind of set this district on fire in a really positive way, taking their knowledge, their experience, and bringing it to our kids. And so, like I said, we expect great things and I have no doubt that you'll, you know, someday, when we're congratulating all the people who retire, that, you know, your names will be on those lists. But with that, I respectfully request approval for the items listed.
Motion.
Motion.
Thank you. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And congratulations and welcome. Patrick for Business and Financial.[1760.15][1760.15](APPLAUSE).
Thanks, Stacy. I would also respectfully request the approval of the items under the Business Financial section of the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the Committee on Special Education, 10.1 to 10.4?
I motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's it, meeting adjourned. Ooh, I'm so sorry.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Motion, excuse me, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.